Our flag's not hitting.
Yeah.
No problem with it.
Mr. Mayor, you're on, I think.
Really?
Council members, Draymond?
Here.
Friedman?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
Weaver?
Here.
Mayor Quintero?
Please rise and face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for this evening's invocation. As we observe a number of important holy days this week, we remain mindful of the spirit of cooperation and community involvement which brings us together during these times to conduct the city's business. To our Jewish friends, we wish them a peaceful Passover or Goutyontif as they gather around tables with family and friends and ask the four questions to reflect on their Exodus. To everyone who started this week with Palm Sunday and will be observing the Holy Week in anticipation of Easter, we wish them a joyous celebration as well. Let us pray to give thanks for this wonderful city and this great state that gives us the opportunity to have people of all backgrounds and creeds to assemble in one place and peacefully observe our traditions and holidays. Let us remember the meaning of the aforementioned holidays and give thanks for family, friends, and a prosperous Glendale. Amen. The agenda for the March 30th, 2010 Regular Meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, March 25th, 2010, on bulletin board outside City Hall. Next is Presentation on Appointments, and at 3:00 A. is Agenda Preview for the Meetings of April 6th, 2010. Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll go to Bob McFaul, Assistant City Manager, for the report. Bob?
Thank you very much, Mr. City Manager and Mr. Mayor, members of council. Next week, we'll be beginning at 10 o'clock with another special meeting similar to this morning. This will be a report from the Director of Administrative Services and Finance on the citywide budget session. This will be Budget Study Session Number Two. The principal talk being City Departments, the Capital Improvement Program, and other budget issues. In the afternoon, there will not be any specific action items on the Housing Authority, but in the Glendale Redevelopment Agency, starting at 2:30, there are two items. First is a report from the Director of Community Development and Housing regarding the Greenstead Group LLC and the Now Card Instant Rewards Program. Then next, the Director of Community Redevelopment and Housing regarding the Economic Development Activity Update Report. That evening on the Glendale City Council Agenda, starting at 6:00 P. M., there'd be two items. First is an action item from the Chief of Police and the Director of Information Services. This is regarding the Public Safety Radio Communications Subscriber Agreement with the City of South Pasadena for use in the Glendale ISIS cell by the South Pasadena Police Department. This would bring another agency into the ISIS family. And then next, the City Attorney with the ordinance regulating the placement of commercial wireless facilities within the city. That would be it.
At 3:00 B. is a presentation by Miss Zina Bethune Theater Dance.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us. I don't know if they're...this is on. Are we on? Okay.
Yes.
I did want to take this opportunity to thank the council for this beautiful commendation you gave us with the Arts and Cultural Commission for our opening night of Silent War at the Glendale Community College. So, thank you, Mayor Quintero and everybody else. It's a lovely, lovely commendation, and we're very proud of it. We've already included it in a couple grants. But for those of you who aren't familiar with us, I wanted to just briefly tell you who we are and why we're here. We're celebrating our 30th year. We're a multimedia dance theater. We were the very first professional dance theater in America to create a participatory program for disabled youth. We've been emulated worldwide, and I'm exceedingly proud of that. We've been in schools and community centers throughout Los Angeles, Ventura County, Orange County, Pasadena, L.A. But we've kind of decided we love Glendale, and it's our new home. And we really want to build an academy here and create an all-inclusive, all arts academy for all populations with curriculum that addresses those populations, along with building our audience base and working with the Arts and Cultural Commission for what you're trying to create in the city of Glendale, so that we work with you. I think we're going to be very happy here. I hope you're happy with our work. We're a multimedia theater. We utilize all different forms of art with the dance as its base. But we did a show in 2007 at the Alex Theater, Ray Bradbury's Frost and Fire. Happy to say, very successful. And this one was glorious, this Silent War. And we're hoping to bring it back either in July or in the fall. We've left you a program in each one of those packets, so you get to see the program. And also a DVD of our Infinite Dreams program. What I did want to show you before I conclude with what we're trying to accomplish, at least in this first year, is just about 40 seconds, which is our web intro for both Infinite Dreams and Bethune Theater Dance. Just a little inch of what we do. But the DVD you have is a little fuller, like a four-minute of Infinite Dreams. We are hoping to work with the schools, elementary, junior, high school, really starting a program to create a line through, so kids who are, especially special needs kids, can see there are possibilities. You don't just have to stop school when it tells you to stop school. Most of them don't even know that or have a sense that they can go on to higher education. So we're hoping to work with Glendale Community College on this and create some start programs that are working with our present elementary school and middle school kids and high school kids, so we start mentoring some of the Glendale Community College special needs kids and also the arts departments there. One of the other things we want to start here in a community center is preferably with maybe a Parks and Rec or another facility that you might and the Arts and Culture Commission might deem right to work with, so that we can start our classes and make them open to everybody. Because when we're in the school, it's just the kids are in the school. But it's very important to us, I think, to work with the community and work with your school system and work with the special needs divisions as well. That's what we're hoping to accomplish, at least in this first year, working ourselves towards creating an academy. But we want very much to work with you to know what it is you're trying to create in Glendale in arts, culture, and education, so that we can hopefully fit that bill. Is there...are there any questions about what we do that you would like answered?
No, I don't think we have any questions, but I'm sure I speak for everyone on the city council. We're very excited to have you here. You've certainly done some great productions, and whatever we can do to help you, we'll absolutely do that.
Okay. I'll take you up on it.
Okay, great.
I definitely will.
No, great.
And I'll send you...we only brought you the Infinite Dreams DVD. I will send each of you our Bethune Theater Dance promo, another four-minuter, so you have that. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next?
Next is City Council and Staff Comments.
City Council Staff Comments.
Just a few little things. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, on Friday, I went to see the Global U.N., which is a group of high school students who acted out a U.N. debate on climate change. And they had done research, they had written speeches. It was very well attended, and they were absolutely brilliant. And it was a real pleasure to see them. And I hope that this model U.N. is something that we can expand into other schools. I think a lot of our school kids would be interested in participating. And on Saturday, along with my colleagues, I attended the Festival for Caesar Chavez at Pacific Park, and we had about 1,000 people there at least. And they were serving free tacos, which were incredible. And there was music all day, including the famous Janie Quintero dance troupe. So it was a really wonderful time, and a lot of our city employees were there. The community had a wonderful time. And so I wanted to thank all of the employees who came out that day to assist and help out and participate. So thank all of you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Freeman.
Very quickly, I just want to let the public know and to thank, at the same time, the government classes at Crescent Valley High School in La Crescent. Had the opportunity, I believe it was Friday last...was it last Friday?
I think so.
It's all a blur. Anyway, last Friday, Councilmember Friedman and I had the opportunity to host, if you will, or to be the guests of their combined government classes. They had a lot of interesting questions for us, believe me, and some of them a bit challenging, but really interesting. And it's exciting to see how our high school seniors are so interested in local government in general and government, of course, on the state and federal as well. But particularly in local government, their concern about continuing education, school district, how it interacts with the city. And I want to thank them for hosting that. It was a lot of fun. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, the Global U.N. debate, I thought, was very, very good. I saw this group of young people in the Mid-Wilshire area a few months ago and suggested that they put something together at the Central Library. They did, and like Ms. Friedman said, it was very well attended. They did a wonderful job. Basically, different nations take...they were spokesmen for different nations, taking different views on global warming and on richer nations helping developing nations to cope with those problems. So hopefully, they'll continue to do this type of thing. I think they're striking a chord with people. Then the Chavez Day event was very well attended. All the volunteers worked very, very hard, and the event gets bigger and bigger every year. So hopefully, we'll have an even bigger turnout next year. And then I want to read this...well, it's not exactly a proclamation, but just to let everyone know that today, March 30th, marks the first statewide observance of Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day. Thirty-seven years after, theoretically, after the end of the war, Governor Schwarzenegger signed AB 717, which established an annual Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day on March 30th. And AB 717 encourages all public schools in California to observe Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day on March 30th and to conduct exercises recognizing the contributions of all those who were involved in the Vietnam War. The U.S. Census Bureau reports there are approximately 8.2 million Vietnam-era veterans throughout the United States. Any other comments from the staff? Okay, next, please.
Next on the agenda is consent items. The following are a routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such request before motion is proposed. Cards have been submitted for 5B and 5C.
Okay, so we'll pull 5B and 5C. I have a motion for the rest of the consent items.
I don't know if there's an abstention.
There's one abstention required by Councilmember Najarian.
March 6th minutes I will have to abstain from.
March 16th, excuse me.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Draymond?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes. Okay, I've been actually handed some new cards for presentations, so we'll come back to the discussion on 5B and C, and I'll have...
I don't know, I think those cards were submitted for oral communications presentations, and we don't have to do them.
Oh, okay. All right, great. All right, then, please read 5B into the record.
5B is Director of Public Works regarding resurfacing of Montrose Avenue and La Crescent Avenue. At B1 is resolution authorizing the increase to the Cooperative Agreement with the County of Los Angeles in an amount of $142,504.50.
Okay, I have two cards. Herbert Milano, followed by Mike Mohill.
Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Quintero, members of the city council, my name is Herbert Milano. For a long time, as I've seen the city move towards doing resurfacing work on our roads, which we need plenty of, I always wondered what...why don't we have a particular cost per unit reflected on these documents? For example, what is the cost per mile? The documents don't appear to give us the actual length of this particular enterprise that you're about to authorize here. So it doesn't give us a cost per unit that we can say, look, in the future, we know that it's going to cost $1 million a mile or $800,000 a mile. The second question...so maybe perhaps someone can answer that question? The second issue that I have is that the city gave, what, $650,000 quite a few years ago? And I was wondering if the city is receiving any interest on that deposit that was made so many years ago? Because calculated at 5% interest, it would have been, should we say, more than enough to cover the current shortage that the county is asking you for. Thank you very much.
Okay, Mike Mohill?
Evening, council members. We had a nice morning session with the budget. Pretty nice. Mike Mohill, resident Glendale. We talked about in the morning session about capital improvement fund. I hope the next session, the season, we're going to have more money for capital improvements. The roads are still falling apart. I don't like to be compared to Los Angeles. I want to compare ourselves to Burbank or Pasadena if we're going to compare ourselves, who has better roads? Or cities who have as much population as we do. Every time there's a pothole, that means I have a will alignment that has to be fixed. Means I have to be taxed twice. First taxed by the city of Glendale, then taxed by my mechanic who's going to do a will alignment anywhere between $75 and $125 to fix it. Why can't we be proactive in fixing our road rather than being reactive? Last year, I had my group of homeowners come here for East Glen Oaks Canyon to fix the road and the potholes. I thank the city council and Mr. Zurin for his department, Public Works, for fixing East Glen Oaks Boulevard. But now East Glen Oaks Boulevard needs to be totally resurfaced. It's been over 20 years. The street that I live on, Ash Burton Place, I've been there 30 years, and it was resurfaced about two years after I moved in. That means that road is...it's been about 28 years since that road was resurfaced. How long do we have to wait for our road to be resurfaced? I'm not the only one who feels the same way. The public wants it. Unfortunately, the public doesn't come here to make a comment like I am and other members. But, you know, let's be proactive rather than reactive to our sidewalks and our roads. Again, my wife did a trip and...excuse me, a trip and fall last year in front of the Venice Hospital because the sidewalks were not maintained. We only sue for the damages of her hospital stuff, but no $100,000 lawsuit like a lot of people would do. It wasn't...I don't play that kind of game. I just want my roads and my sidewalks to be needed. Thank you.
Okay, I don't know if those are rhetorical questions, or...but does someone want to make a motion?
I'll move 5B1.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Draymond.
I'll only say, and I mean this as a joke, I don't understand how you proactively fix potholes. You can't fix them till they exist.
Okay, roll call, please. Good point.
Councilmembers Draymond?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes. Okay, please read 5C into the record.
5C is Director of Public Works regarding revision of refuse collection fees. At C1 is motion setting a public hearing on June 15th, 2010.
Okay, I have some speaker cards. Herbert Milano, followed by Mike Mohill.
Mr. Mayor, this is for the hearing, except the hearing. All right?
Yeah.
Okay. We're going to hear about the hearing.
I have speaker cards, Mr. Weaver. Let's go and not go down that constitutional lane.
Okay, sir.
Herbert Milano, followed by Mike Mohill.
Mayor Quintero, members of the city council and city staff, my name is Herbert Milano. It is my hope that when this issue comes up before the public, that we are provided with relevant information concerning the trends in the costs of refuse collection in the city of Glendale. In the chart of the documents that you received, it shows very clearly what the cost is for single-family homes. It's a very easy number to understand. But when it comes to multifamily, most people don't know that each individual tenant pays around $15 each, and the landlord also pays that as well. So when you do a prorated amount for multifamily housing, it's not the number that appears there for single-family home. It's much higher, over $22. Now, among the rationale that is stated on those documents is the rationale that the costs have gone up with regard to refuse collection. And I know costs can go up due to energy costs in transportation, for example. But the city continually, every single year, transfers money from the landfill revenues and moves it over into the general fund. I believe this morning, the budget session, there was a $1 million that was expected. And I wonder if the landfill and the refuse collection, both are in the same fund or in separate funds? So my issue is this, that maybe raising the prices might be okay if it induces individuals to conserve and reduce the amount of wastage. But I don't see a city policy that is comprehensive towards it. I think that our goal should be to try to preserve the landfill for as long as possible, knowing to reduce and encourage the reduction of refuse that basically is given to the city for collection. Nonetheless, at this economic times, for many people, you know, even though for some it may be just a few cents and so forth, it continues to add up. So I suggest that we are presented with the whole history for the last 10 years of the increases in the refuse fees and perhaps how that is impacting the general public. Thank you very much.
Mike Mohill, followed by Margaret Hammond.
Evening, Mike Mohill, Glendale resident. Gee, Mr. Milano kind of took the wind out of my sail here. Basically, the same thing, expenses. How do you justify these expenses? Why can't Glendale be different, the city that doesn't raise fees? That would be a novelty, wouldn't it? But instead, we cut expenses. Where does it show...where do we have evidence that they've actually cut expenses? I'd like that department to actually show the public where they've been cutting expenses and just say, here, we just need more money. But you know what? I could do that. I need more money. And you know what? I'm on Social Security. Nobody gives me any more money. And all the other people in Glendale who live on Social Security, we're hurting again. Another fee passed on to us. When is it going to end? I know. It's not a big deal, $5 here, $10 here. But you know what? $5, $10, $20. People are leaving Glendale. Apartments are going empty. Why? We have 12% or more unemployment in this city and the county. We're in a depression right now. Some may say it's a recession. That's if you're working. But if you're not working, it's a depression. It's a depression out there. Look at the breadlines right now. They're the breadlines out there. It's called unemployment insurance. The federal government goes ahead and writes another check for $5 billion. It's just paper money, and inflation goes up, and Glendale's part of the same problem. Let's go back to staff and say, hey, guys, why don't we cut the expenses and show the city that we are cutting expenses and not raising fees? Thank you.
Margaret Hammond.
Good evening, Your Honor, members of the city council, staff, and members of the audience. My name is Margaret Hammond, and I have been here and spoke about this subject before, about the injustice, injustice to the apartment owners of Glendale, about the fact that I have to...I pay for a bin so that I don't have 12 or 20 buckets sitting around my apartment, which are very uns...would be very unsightly, because each tenant would have to have three buckets. And since the tenants pay for those buckets and never get them, of course, because I pay for a bin, I think it is totally robbery, not just injustice. I don't understand why the apartment owners aren't here or aren't taking...picketing out front or whatever, because with the rate of vacancies right now, the landlord is made to pay for that vacant apartment. He has to pay the water, the power, and the trash pickup, even though there's nobody in there. Why does he do that? Because if he doesn't and he wants to show the apartment, the apartment would be dark. There would be no way to show the apartment in the evening or whatever. And in order to get the apartment cleaned, of course, he has to pay for the power. But the trash, it's ridiculous. There's nobody in the apartment. And yet, here I am, already paying for a bin, and on top of that, with the vacant apartment, I have to pay the trash for that vacant apartment. I don't think it's fair. I do not understand with the number of vacancies that are in Glendale right now, why the landlords aren't rising up and screaming. I don't know about how they're getting along, but you know, even though you have your vacancies for a year or whatever, you still have your insurance, your taxes, your upkeep, plus, as I say, on top of that, you're having to pay for an apartment that's vacant, for the water and the power and the trash. So I don't think it's right at all. I've spoke about this before, and now you're talking about raising the rates. Uh-uh. If you're already double-dipping, how come we're going to have to pay more? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, that's the final card, Mr. Weaver.
I don't know what any of the comments had to do with setting a hearing date for 15 June, but I'll move 5C1. We can hear it all over again.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Draymond?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes. Next, please.
Next would be Oral Communications.
Okay, I have a number of cards. This is the first half of Oral Communications. I'll start with Christina Galstien, followed by Gail Craig.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. My name is Christina Galstien, and I'm on the Board of Director with Glendale Healthy Kids. And those who don't know about Glendale Healthy Kids, our mission is to ensure that all children of Glendale and, of course, surrounding areas have access to health care and health education. And I was told that there will be a PSA playing at this point.
I have a passion for helping people.
I don't know if we'll be able to hear the audio. We may have to turn it on.
That's why I became a dentist.
But rest assured, the folks that are more able to hear that.
Unfortunately, these days, many children don't have access to the services they need. Glendale Healthy Kids fills that gap and provides access to free medical and dental care to those who need it most.
Thank you, Glendale Healthy Kids.
Okay, well...
A new digs.
Well, anyway, I will be making some announcements today, great announcements, and just to let you know what Glendale Healthy Kids has been doing, and also request your participation and your support, of course. April was named Glendale Healthy Kids Month in April 2008 by Mayor Ara Najarian. April 17, we have four... April 17, we have For the Kids Health Fair, free screenings and testings for the children of all ages. Parents should contact Glendale Healthy Kids for more information, of course. The Lions Club will be doing free vision testing for every age, the same day, from 9 to 4, at the Pacific Community Center. To raise the funds for this event, April 20 will be a massage day for Glendale Healthy Kids at the Massage Envy. All proceeds will go to Glendale Healthy Kids. Please book your massages and just help us and our children. Lose a Ton in 10 Campaign continues, sponsored by Glendale Healthy Kids, Glendale Adventist Medical Center, and All About Your Wellness Bootcamp. Our goal is a healthier Glendale by collectively losing 2,000 pounds. Even if you have a couple pounds to lose, please join us. They will help us. We thank you all for your ongoing support and your participation.
Thank you. Next card is Gail Craig, followed by Elise Calphian.
We're gonna light the food. Good evening, Your Honor, and councilmembers and city staff. My name is Gail Craig. I'm with SirOptimus International of Glendale. And I am here this evening, along with our Jim Sandy Schultz, to promote the upcoming Bras for a Cause event. This is an annual event that I think the majority of you have attended, so it's nothing new that you don't know about already. But we're here to talk about our event coming up on Saturday evening, April 10. It's at the Embassy Suites Hotel. We will be starting at 5:30 with the silent auction that is also including the bras that people have decorated. This year's theme is, a theme that is Bras for a Cause Salutes Television. And already, one of the bras that we have is promoting I Love Lucy Show. This was one of the ones from last year that won an award when we had our theme that was Bras for a Cause Goes to Work. The silent auction and the awards for the bras is followed by an evening program and dinner that begins at 7:00. And this year, we have a Lucy, Lucille Ball impersonator that will be emceeing our program, so it'll be a lot of fun. She's gonna do a little routine, as well as emceeing the program. And the tickets for the event are $75 per person, as well as various sponsorship opportunities. And that can still be done anytime. You can pick up an invitation at the Beverly Ann Florist Shop. You can also submit a bra at the same location. They're located at 1150 North Brand Boulevard. And we'd love to have our community come out and support this event. The funds raised from the event go to support breast cancer services at the three local hospitals here in Glendale, as well as various nonprofit organizations that promote and improve the lives of women and girls. Is there anything I forgot? Sandy? I did good? Okay.
Let's have the date.
Thank you so much.
Date one more time. April 10?
April 10, Saturday evening, Embassy Suites Hotel. I will leave invitations here for those of you who may not have seen it come through your office. And thank you so much for your time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Elise Calphian, followed by Carol Sianfrini.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, members of the City Council and city staff and audience. My name is Elise Calphian, and I'm here tonight to announce three special events coming up at the Glendale Central Library. Two of the events focus on Armenian history and have outside cosponsors. March 31, that's tomorrow, at 7:00 in the evening, Dr. Gregory Arashian will speak about new archaeological findings and what they reveal about prehistoric life in the Near Eastern Highlands. Dr. Arashian was the Director of the Archaeological Institute of America. And the library worked with the institute to present this free program to the public, and it should be a very interesting evening. The second Armenian history program will be held Sunday, April 18, at 3 o'clock in the afternoon. And that will be the 95th anniversary on the Armenian genocide, the Symposium on the Armenian Genocide. Scholars from Denmark, Ireland, Germany, and Richard Hovenician of UCLA will speak at this free program of lectures. The scholars are going to talk about foreign witnesses to the genocide, what the Third Reich knew about the Armenian genocide, the mass violence of the Young Turks' reign of terror, and the impact of the genocide in retrospect and looking forward. Dr. Hovenician organized this symposium with the library and with support from the Surin and Verkeen Papazian Fund. Finally, I'd like to invite the public to an event focusing on recent American history and sponsored by the Friends of the Glendale Public Library. Next Wednesday, April 7, at 7:00, Tom Hayden will be our guest speaker and will discuss his new book, The Long Sixties: From 1960 to Barack Obama. Hayden was a prominent and controversial activist for several decades. He led street demonstrations at the 1968 Democratic Convention in Chicago. He organized the Campaign for Economic Democracy in California, which won dozens of local offices. He served in the State Assembly and the State Senate for 18 years total and managed to pass over 100 measures, including many consumer and workplace safety laws, environmental protections, and so on. He also facilitated the South Africa divestment negotiations between Bishop Desmond Tutu and the University of California. There's even more information about his long career on the library's event webpage. In his book, he argues that movements triumph over politics and that social reforms don't end up satisfying either the reformers or their opponents. So it should be a very interesting discussion and talk, and we're inviting and encouraging everyone to attend. And just for those who will be attending, please park in the Maryland parking lot. Give yourself a little bit of extra time to park there. The library parking is only for 30 minutes, but there is three-hour validation for the Maryland parking lot at the library. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Carol Sianfrini.
And I'm Carol.
And John Sianfrini and Officer Mike Ulrich. Yes, it is.
Mayor Quintero, City Council members and staff. We're here to invite you to the most quiet festival we have had in our area. And that's our chess festival that's coming up, April 10. You'll have to come to ours and then go to SirOptimist. So it's from 10:00 in the morning until 5:00 at night. We got together with the AAA Chess Club to put this together. This wasn't one of the easiest things to do. But let me tell you, you know, we have been very blessed having this association in South Glendale. I hope everybody has seen this. We've been able to put events together that have hopefully helped our neighborhood. It's a very diverse community. And having these things has brought people down and shown them where Adams Square is. But one of the big things that happened when Glendale broke us up into four districts, and Chief DePampa said, "Well, we need, you know, commanding officers for each district." We got Lieutenant Cohen, who is incredible, by the way. And Lieutenant Cohen looked at Sergeant Gilkerson and said, "Wow, now we need an officer in the area." And surprise, we got Mike Ulrich, who has been absolutely wonderful. Mike has been at all of our events. And when we brought up the fact that we wanted to have a chess festival, where do we get started? We turned to Mike, and that's why Mike is here now, to give you some insight as to what happened with us. Go ahead.
All I wanted to say is I would really like to invite one or all of you guys to come out and maybe play a chess game against some of the local constituents. You know, we have some kids out there. It would be great for you guys to come out there and play a game against one or two or three of the kids that are gonna come out to this. From what I've been told, there's, they have a lot of people that are signing up for this. I think it'll be a great event. We'd really like to see you guys out there.
Will you let us play checkers?
I'll be on the checkerboard with you, sir.
We have form.
Go ahead, John.
We've had a lot, my name is John Sianfrini, President of the Adams Square Merchant. We've had a long run. We've had about 12 years of successful events with your help, your money, and a lot of help from everybody else. We really hit pay dirt since we met this Officer Mike Ulrich. He's not only locks the walk, he talks the talk, the whole shot. He gets in there and he does the clean stuff, the bad stuff, crowd control, makes popcorn, man's the broom, you know, the whole shot. And so he's very resourceful. While we're at it, I'd like to thank George Chapman for letting Dave Ahern kind of be in the, in the wings. He's always there when we need him. Chief DePampa, he's not only made Mike Ulrich our angel, but he lets Lieutenant Pro Litis come down. Same thing, good with the broom, popcorn, whatever you want. And Phil Landsafame, I really wanna thank him 'cause he makes Diane Valentine and Ken Hits available to us. Being that we're thanking, may as well thank everybody. Steve Zern, I can understand Mr. Mohill, his gripe. He's probably, he got a point. But if, on the other side of the coin, if you wanna see Palmer Avenue, they're doing, Steve's doing an expeditious job of redoing it, cleaning it fast, okay? He really knows what he's doing. Other than that, I don't know. I think I ran out of time.
Other than that, you're done.
You guys.
On April 10 for the chess festival or checkers demonstration?
We might be able to do something there. Having something in the library. I think they're having checkers there. Thank you all.
Wanna see y'all there, okay?
Not that this isn't a very intellectual council that isn't capable of paint, playing to high level of chess.
Start somewhere.
Thank you all.
Can you send the information to our offices, too?
Yes.
Great.
Do you want to meet us here?
Sure.
Yeah, you can leave them here.
Absolutely.
All right. Final card is Gary Sinanian.
Honorable Mayor, members of City Council, my name is Gary Sinanian, and I'm with the North Southern Cultural Association. Ever since 1999, we have organized, we have hosted the Armenian Festival that takes place every year at Glendoverdugo Park. And I would like to start early and extend this invitation to Mayor yourself and everybody in the City Council and all Glendelians throughout the city. This event is truly a great, great event that we enjoy hosting every year. Basically, it's an event, this year will take place at September 26. We thank all the members of the City Council that supported us in the past, and we look forward in your support in the future. I would also like to thank the City Clerk's Office for making the transition of the permits an easy process. Thank you for that. And we basically look forward to seeing everybody and every Glendelian to this wonderful event so we can share our culture, come together, have a great day, enjoy Armenian culture, music, food, and you're all welcome to be there. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
September 26, at what location?
At Glendoverdugo Park. It's been there for the last, ever since 1999.
And the time?
It starts at 10:00 AM until about 7:00.
Okay. And I know the city's cosponsor of the event. September 26 at Verdugo Park from 10:00 to 7:00. Okay, thank you. All right, that's the final card. What's next?
Next, under Action Items, at 8A is General Manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding Milford Wind Corridor Phase 2 Project Power Sales Agreement with the Southern California Public Power Authority and contract for sale and purchase of Milford Wind Phase 2 Energy with Los Angeles Department of Water and Power and the Southern California Public Power Authority. At 8A1 is an ordinance for introduction approving the Milford Wind Corridor Phase 2 Project Power Sales Agreement. And at 8A2 is a resolution authorizing the Milford Wind Corridor Phase 2 Project Power Sales Agreement and contract sale and purchase of Milford Wind Phase 2 Energy.
Mr. Starburn.
Mr. Mayor, I'll go to Glenn Steiger, General Manager of GWP, for the staff report. Glenn.
Thank you. Mayor Quintero, members of Glendale City Council. This agenda item and the next agenda item both relate to the GWP renewable energy portfolio, which currently stands at just under 23%. It's just about one of the highest in the state. We're very proud of that fact. And these two agenda items will both, will go to bolster that. So I'd like to introduce our Assistant General Manager of Power Supply, Steve Linz, to give you a little bit more detail.
Mr. Mayor, members of the Council, Steve Linz, Assistant General Manager of Supply for GWP. Tonight, I'm here to discuss our third option on a wind project with LA DWP. We came to you before with Linden and Windy Point, which were also option projects. This project is a 102-megawatt project in Utah. There's 68 General Electric turbines on the project. Five megawatts of the 102 would be for Glendale. 97 would be for LA. The energy, when delivered, would be delivered at IPP, which is where we have some transmission to bring the interview home. The anticipated commercial operation date is December 2010. And GWP has an option on this project to take any or all of the five megawatts three years from that commercial operation date. And in addition, if the council adopts a more aggressive RPS before that time, we can take that energy on 60 days' notice. And we anticipate that we'll be back sometime soon as the state CAR regulations are looming with a 33% by 2020. The project is either a 20-year power purchase agreement, but then there's also an option, starting in year seven, to buy the entire project. In either case, Glendale Water and Power would be getting about 10,600 megawatt-hours of energy every year, which is only about 0.88%, let's call it 1%, RPS. We would pay about 1.1 million a year for a total of 22 million over 20 years. If we exercised, if we opted into the project and exercised the purchase option, then after the bonds were paid off in 20 years, our energy, and this is a conservative estimate, would only cost about $40 a megawatt-hour, the fuel or wind being free at that point and the bonds paid off. Currently, our adopted renewable portfolio standard is 20% to 23% by 2017. And I've handed out a couple of pie charts. The one on top shows our current or existing renewables at 22.6%. And that includes large hydro. And I'll comment about large hydro for Councilmember Najarian a little bit later. On that front pie chart, you can see the breakdown of all our renewables. We've got geothermal, 1.6; biomass, which is Shoal Canyon Landfill, 6.8; small hydro, which is the new Titan Power Project we bought up in Washington just recently; large hydro, which is Hoover, 4.7; wind at 7.7; solar, 0.1%, which includes the Community College project. There currently is a draft California Air Resources Board Renewable Electricity Standard that's going through the regulatory process. That proposed standard is 20% for the period 2012 to 2014, 24% for the period 2015 to 2017, 28% for the period 18 to 19, and then finally, 33% in 2020. One thing that's interesting in that draft, Councilmember Najarian, is that they're proposing that we can count large hydro if you've been counting it previously, which we have. If that passes and we're supporting that in the regulatory process, we'd be able to count that until our existing contract expires, which is 2017. So if you switch to the second pie chart, this breaks out the existing renewables at 22.6%, but then also breaks out a slice for all of our options. And those options are a total of 6.6%. You can see on the left that Milford 2 there is the 1%. And Windy Point, Windy Flats, and Linden, which we're already in. So basically, we are at a point where we've got 29.2% renewable energy available. We need it. So we're way ahead of anybody that we're aware of in the state. And I think our strategy is to maximize as much optionality as possible here in terms of options, because we just don't know what's gonna happen on the regulatory front. So we're putting these things in place, and if we need them, we'll use them. And if we don't, we won't. So I'd request you introduce the ordinance and approve the REZO, adopting and authorizing the related agreements.
Mayor, are there any questions or comments? Ms. Friedman.
I have a question. Last year, there was a, I believe, a defeated bill in the State Assembly to only count renewables from within California. Do we expect that to come back?
Well, Governor Schwarzenegger vetoed those bills. We don't expect them to come back in as aggressive a form. At a minimum, we think that we're gonna be able to count some significant percentage of renewables from outside sources. Example, 25% using TRECs, which is tradable recs that aren't actually connected to physical delivery of the power. There was something that just came out this week. I'm not exactly sure what the proposal is, but we don't expect something as aggressive as that. And for Glendale, that's a problem, because, as you know, we have And for Glendale, that's a problem because, as you know, we have transmission from the northwest through LA to the southwest. And the reason we can put a 33% renewable portfolio standard in place without too much extreme cost is that we're using our existing transmission. So we need projects along those transmission lines. If you start to say you can only put them in California, then you create big transmission problems and, you know, the, the expense goes up dramatically.
Thank you.
Well, and to that whole concept, I mean, what we need is a Western solution and especially a Southwestern solution. So I don't understand why people are even contemplating that somehow Nevada, Colorado, Arizona, even New Mexico shouldn't be included in energy planning.
Or even a national solution.
Beyond that, well, that's for sure.
Make the most sense.
Okay, well, I am very, very pleased, Mr. Lenz. You had a comment, Mr. Najarian? No, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. So, Mr. Lenz, so what I'm hearing then is the energy that we're going to be getting from the Milford 1 and 2 is going to be competitively priced.
Yes, and you know, actually, I didn't mention that directly. The cost would be $108 per megawatt hour, which is right in the ballpark of all the wind and that we've been buying. It's competitive. All the wind projects we've been buying with shaping and transmission have been right around that $110 mark.
Mr. Mayor, today, the mayor of Los Angeles held a news conference and declared that the city of LA DWMP was going to be the cleanest and greenest energy utility in the nation. I think we should take that challenge and slap down the old wind turbine on them. And I think we're well on our way. I think, I commend GWP for this council's direction numerous times to seek cleaner and more sustainable forms of energy, especially when it's competitively priced. And it's a benefit for the ratepayers, it's a benefit for the entire region. So I think we take that. I think we could send you to.
Number one.
LA City Hall and lay down the challenge, Mr. Mayor.
I'll be there tomorrow. We're absolutely number one. They'll have to beat us. Mr. Drayman.
Is my colleague suggesting that the LA City Council generates more wind than Glendale? I don't know.
As you know, I've been an advocate of doing that for many years, right in front of the council dais.
All right.
Well, you know, when I look back, when I was first elected to the city council and I think about the percentage of renewables back then, it was minimal, let's put it that way, other than the hydro, the long-established hydro that we take. But no, GWP has done a great job. I think it's stepped up even more since Mr. Steiger and Mr. Lenz have been leading the charge. You guys are doing a great job of, of seeking out these different sources. And I think the rest of the nation will be following the city of Glendale. So you think we're number one in terms of the state of California?
I haven't confirmed the actual numbers around the state.
Certainly, in cities our size.
Longer than anybody that I know of in the Southern California utility community.
Yeah, that's very good.
Mr. Mayor?
And the point I was trying to make that I think we're all, we're all aware of, the mayor of Los Angeles laid down that challenge or that, that brag in the midst of his attempt to increase his rates by way of a surcharge for that green energy. And the question I think that we all want to ask at the same time is, are we proposing any surcharges for the purchase of this sustainable energy?
No, actually, this is an option, so there's no fiscal impact right now. If we did opt in, this is less than 1% of our load. It's 3/100ths of 1% a potential cost increase, which would pretty much be absorbed by our fuel adjustment charge. So I don't anticipate any kind of rate impact, Chris.
So it's cleaner energy at essentially no additional cost?
Not no additional cost, 3/100ths of 1% additional cost for this 0.8%, 0.88%. I, I've been here before, about a year ago, with the entire program. And at that time, we anticipated, you know, maybe a 7% increase related to a 33% renewable portfolio standard. And there's no reason to, to think that that's changed too much. So over time, when you hit the full 33%, there may be a 7% rate impact. But at the same time, we're saving money and reducing rates. We just saved money related to the next council item I'm going to talk about, which is the purchase of a Shoal, and that enabled us to reduce rates 9%. So we're not sure whether or not ultimately there'll be rate impacts or, or increases related to the renewables based on what we're, we're doing with the strategic plan.
But so far, no.
So far, no.
Okay.
So far, we've seen a 9% decrease in rates.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lenz. I have two cards. Herbert Milano, followed by Mike Mohill.
Mayor Quintero, members of the city council, city staff, my name is Herbert Milano. I always look at initiatives of this sort as the type of initiatives that would benefit everyone. The renewable energy as a, as a, as an objective for the city, especially the larger amounts every year, I think will go to a considerable extent in reducing our carbon emissions. What I would like to see in some of these reports is the overall cost as it would be represented to, to the end user. We see the numbers in, in megawatt dollars. We pretty much can tell what it's going to cost per kilowatt. But it'd be nice to see a report of what would be the impact, let's say, on a, on a typical bill. Now, I have significant problems with the, the electric bill that we get today. It's, doesn't really provide really sensible information, very little of it. I've asked many people, including many who work in the city, to explain to me what each one of those items are, and they have the difficulty telling me. I think it needs to be simplified, but I want to tie it into this issue here. And one of the things that we should have on the bill is a line that says how much of that bill is renewable energy, you know, as a percentage or some other number, that allows us to, to know if we're moving in the right direction, let the public know that we have a certain percentage of our energy, a renewable source. I'm assuming that perhaps in the future, there will be some added costs as we move forward with more wind energy, meaning the added cost that the city imposes on top of whatever the cost is of purchasing that power. If we're going to continue to add the cost that the city imposes on top of the cost of that electricity, I want to know what that impact would be on multifamily residential owners. I did a calculation of my last three years of all the bills, total amount of kilowatt hours purchased, and the total amount of electrical bill, and it came out to nearly 22 cents per kilowatt hour on average. And I think that is a very, very high rate to maintain. Nonetheless, I think that there is room for us to say, we can justify a rate like 22 cents a kilowatt hour, or even 25, if we knew that, you know, 30, 40, 50% of that is renewable energy. My time, I think, is up. Thank you very much.
Three minutes.
My objective here is to, is to request that a mandate be made to the Glendale Water and Power to provide the type of information on the electric bill that tells us very clearly where the source of our, our energy comes in and the cost. The cost for that dirty energy like coal and, and non-renewable, like gas, and so that we can actually tell basically where our bill costs are coming from.
Mike Mohill.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Mike Mohill, resident of Glendale. In Los Angeles, we talked about what's going on in Los Angeles, which is a big protest right now on the rate increases. So let's just fluff it off. There's a lot, a lot of fiscal conservatives who don't like this going on. And here in Glendale, what perked my ears right now about 10 minutes ago, when I heard the word, we need to get a bond. Bond, what does that mean? That means that pay, buy now, pay later. I like that word, bond. Unless I heard the wrong word, bond. The speaker mentioned the word bond. He talked about having a bond. Am I wrong, Mr. Drayman?
I'm not saying you're wrong, I just don't remember hearing that.
Neither do I.
Okay, maybe I got some wax in my ears this time. Okay, I admit that, okay? Well, okay, well, the, the point is, I hope it is, I hope it's a pay, a pay-as-you-go and we don't have to borrow money to pay for this, this thing called conservation. Got a little bit of that, okay? Again, I heard the word bond and that bothered me. Thank you.
All right, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll introduce the ordinance at 8A1.
All right, thank you, Mr. Weaver.
I'll move the resolution at 8A2.
Need a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers, Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes.
Next, please.
At 8B is General Manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding approval of the addition of two GWP positions, one power plant operator position and one power plant control operator as part of the purchase of Shoal Canyon Landfill Gas Project. At 8B1 is a resolution appropriating $201,583.
Mr. Lenz.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, and Steve Lenz, Assistant General Manager of Supply for GWP. In December 2009, council approved the purchase of what we are now calling Shoal Canyon Landfill Gas Compressor Plant. That includes the compressor equipment up there and the pipeline that goes from that plant down to Grayson. They approved the, the purchase of that plant for $23 million.
Mr. Lenz, I'm sorry to, why don't you let the public know that exactly how it works? The gas, the landfill, the gas pump, the electricity, just to let people know what it is.
The landfills.
Make it simpler, make it simpler. Paint a picture.
The landfills filled with trash, there's pipes going through the trash that collect the gas that comes from that trash. That gas is cleaned up and then compressed and shipped down to Grayson Power Plant where it's blended with commercial quality natural gas and burned at our plant to generate electricity.
Thank you very much.
So council approved the purchase of this project and it generated a savings of about $9 million based on the price of gas on the date that the purchase option was exercised. At that time, we indicated to the council that those costs, or that cost calculation savings of $9 million included those two current positions, the two current staff that are working at the plant. And then we intended to convert those positions to City of Glendale classifications in order to operate the plant. And as kind of a non-binding promise to the seller, we did tell them that we were going to try to bring these folks on, the two employees. They are, or have been operating the plant since 1999 and know much more about its operation than anybody else in the world, basically. So those employees are currently being provided to us through a six-month service agreement with the seller, which expires July 4th. In coordination with Matt Doyle, Human Resources, and some of my GWP operations staff, we looked at the job classifications that we have in place and determined that the power plant operator and power plant control operator were a good match for the skills or the specified skills that we needed to run the plant. So the, the power plant operator position ranges from $48,000 to $63,000 without benefits and $63 to $82 with benefits. The power plant control operator ranges from 70 to 91 without benefits, 91 to 119 with benefits. And, you know, basically, we need these, these positions to run the plant. The staff that are there now, over the last two years averaged, combined with all of their benefits, they got, they got through Shoal Canyon Corporation, about $190,000 a year. And at this point, these resolutions of appropriation would appropriate the maximum of those two positions at 201. We don't know where those employees would start in those positions or even for sure if it will be them. We're, we're working on a process to see if we can appoint them by attainment, and if we can't do that, then we'll go out for some sort of, you know, promotional recruitment.
Any questions?
We're requesting that you authorize approval of the appropriation for the two positions.
Any questions or comments? Okay, I have one speaker card, Mike Mohill.
Evening, Mayor, council members. I did a little research myself on the salaries of control operators of the power plant. And I checked out with Southern California Gas Company and senior plant operator salaries. And here's another one about estimates. I guess the question is, since we are, we're going to be having the same employees that are there right now, who know the, the job, would be foolish on our part to go, you know, outsource it, should we say. So having heard the gentleman from the GWP, I'm not going to make any comments. I think they're doing a fine job in price comparison. These are tight money days. We must be fiscal conservative. Thank you.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, move 8, 8B1.
And a second?
Second.
Comments? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes.
Next, please.
At 8C is Director of Libraries, Director of Community Services and Parks regarding status of the formation of Glendale Arts Council. At C1 is a motion to open file.
Mr. Starburn.
Mr. Mayor, I'll go to Cindy Clary, Director of Libraries, for the staff report. Cindy?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm here tonight to update you on the status of the formation of the Arts Council. As directed by city council and approved by city council, staff has moved forward with the formation of the Arts Council to be funded with $75,000 now allocated to the Arts and Culture Commission. The goals of the Arts Council will focus on small-scale programming, fundraising to support future programming, and partnerships between the business community and the arts community. Since this was last discussed with you, Library, Community Services, and Parks Department have solicited input from people invested in a dynamic arts community and the, to, to gather input and help us develop a work plan and a mission statement. The conversations were productive and through this process, a preliminary mission statement and work plan has been developed. And if I could, let me read those to you. The Glendale Arts Council will enhance the visibility, this is the mission statement, "The Glendale Arts Council will enhance the visibility of the arts in Glendale. The Arts Council will contribute to a more vibrant arts community through small-scale programming in a variety of disciplines. The Arts Council will encourage economic development by building links between the arts community, residents, and the business community." And the initial work plan that's been developed is as follows. "The Arts Council will produce small-scale programming while promoting business and commerce through the geographical locales in Glendale. The programs for which the allocated funds are to be used must have a fundraising element built in to support future programming. These programs may take the form of juried art shows, exhibits, music events, and/or other live performances and as further refined by Arts Council members. The Arts Council will be expected to provide annual reports to city council regarding the goals and progress." Our next steps that we anticipate would be to develop an RFP, a Request for Proposal, inviting nonprofit organizations to apply as overseers of the Arts Council. Community members invested in the arts, along with city staff, will be invited to participate in reviewing the applications. Once we have the top three candidates, we'll bring them forward to you for, for approval. And with that, any questions?
Any questions or comments? I have no speaker cards. Mr. Najarian.
I'm, I'm just a little confused as to the relationship between Glendale Arts that we, we heard from a little bit today during the Alex Theater Report and the Arts Council and the Arts and Culture Commission. How do they all interact and what significant role does each one play?
Well, I, I, first of all, I think one of the things that, that we want to do with the Arts Council is to make it distinct from other arts organizations and not be in competition with the other arts organizations in the community. I think that with the Arts and Culture Commission, with the last meeting, there was some discussion about its future role and what role it played as an advisory group or continuing as it does, which is a broader scope to include programming. Glendale Arts, I think, could work hand in hand with the Arts Council and.
Are they tied specifically to the Alex? Is that correct?
Yes.
Glendale Arts is.
Yes.
And the Arts Council then has a broader range of programming and art development within the city.
Right. Well, it, well, it's an independent, I mean, the goal is, or the dream is for it to be an independent nonprofit organization.
Okay. And then the Arts and Culture. And then the Arts and Culture Commission, weren't they going to get phased out? Is that something we had...
Yeah, I thought so.
...discussed? I know Mr. Draymond knows this better than I do. Because I don't know much about it.
The anticipation at the time we first had this discussion was, that is correct. That may not be the case at this point. As a matter of fact, I don't know that I would even advocate for that at this point. I think that we saw a level of, I'm not sure of the best way to characterize it, Mr. Najarian, but I think we saw a level of infusion of politics from outside of the Arts Council that was driving some, not Arts Council, the Arts and Culture Commission, that were, I think the operative word is perhaps bedlam at the time. However, the goal had been, and what this council voted for, was the creation of an independent nonprofit or to facilitate the creation of an independent nonprofit for a Glendale Arts Council. The role being extremely different from Arts and Culture Commission. They're not an advisory board to the City Council. They are not a city board or commission with nominated or elected commissioners. And their goal and their purpose is specifically small-scale programming. In terms of Glendale Arts, Glendale Arts is a, I have the executive director sitting here right now. It may be that they may be one of the organizations that might come forward during an RFP and say, perhaps we might be that organization that would like to form the Arts and Culture, Arts and Culture, excuse me, Arts Council or serve as Glendale Arts Council. However, their function right now is not the same as an Arts Council. Their function right now is, as you say, tied to the Glendale Alex Theater, and they are sort of an administrative slash fundraising arm of the Alex Theater. Their primary goal is not programming. And as I say, the executive director is sitting here, he could probably tell you more to what exactly the role of Glendale Arts is. But they are a separate organization. They are not an Arts Council, nor are they our City Arts and Culture Commission.
And how large do we envision the Arts Council to be? Is it three? I saw your, the top three candidates. Explain that to me.
Yeah, I mean, we haven't yet gotten into the details of how many people would actually be on the Arts Council, but I would imagine three to five to six or seven.
Mr. Draymond.
Mr. Draymond.
Typically, Mr. Najarian, typically with cities that have Arts Councils, these are, this is an independent organization. How they operate is not, is not at the discretion of the City Council to say, as an independent nonprofit, you will have this many people serving or that many people serving. Simply put, we don't have an organization in the City of Glendale that has public outreach that creates small-scale programming in the lively arts that goes and takes that programming citywide, that interfaces with our business community, that interfaces with our schools, and so on. So this is to facilitate the creation of such an organization. The only reason, in fact, that the city is involved at this point, and based on what we voted on before, was to provide, in exchange for a work program that says, here's what we're going to provide you, X number of Shakespeare in the Park evenings, X number of poetry readings with a component of a jazz combo, this number of juried art shows, this number of dance programs. In exchange for that, we will be partially subsidized by the City of Glendale to the tune of $75,000 for the year. And those are funds that are existing funds that were going into what at the time was staff costs.
For arts and culture.
For arts and culture. The issue had been that the overwhelming amount of money that the city was putting forward into the Arts and Culture Commission was for staff and virtually nothing for programming. And so there we sat with a board that was really supposed to be an advisory board on the arts for the City Council, like all of our other boards and commissions, and really no ability to do any programming. And still, we have this void of no programming in the arts for the City of Glendale.
Thank you for that clarification. Mr. Weaver.
Cindy, you met with some 34 participants, asked questions. This three-page report, there's absolutely no feedback on what the participants said. Can you enlighten me some?
Sure. We asked them four basic questions, and the one that perhaps got the most input was what were people's vision for the arts in Glendale.
What did they envision?
What was their, what did they see or what did they think was a need in the arts community? And so we ran the gamut from the big and the small. A lot of it was outside of the scope of an Arts Council. But I think the overriding themes, there were a couple overriding themes. One was that the Arts Council could help with developing a stronger arts identity in the community. Another theme that I heard over and over was about bringing the cultural differences together through the arts. There was concern about funding and competition of funding between all the different arts organizations. Well, and the fact that that funding is drying up, so that was a good part of the discussion. As I said, it really ran the gamut in terms of what kind of input we got.
I was, first, feedback I heard, maybe the same confusion we had here. Why are we doing this? There's a Glendale Arts, so why are you doing it? Did that come up much?
Well, I, there were some people, yeah, that were concerned with that, but I would say overall, truly, most people were invested in the idea of an Arts Council as a grassroots movement, as opposed to a more formalized organization, where people from all areas of the community could participate. But there was interest in the grassroots concept of it as being a little different than other organizations.
Ms. Friedman.
So is there some kind of a report or a summary of those participant interviews?
Oh, yeah. I mean, I can provide that for you.
Yeah, I'm a little surprised that we didn't get that as part of our packet. So was that exercise, what was that exercise done for if we weren't to be shown the results of it?
I mean, the main purpose was to help us head in the direction and develop the work plan, or preliminary work plan and a preliminary mission. And I think it was partly to gather some enthusiasm, to garner some enthusiasm for an Arts Council. And I certainly can share the input. I do have a summary of the input that I can share with you. I didn't record every word, but sort of, as I said before, the themes that ran through.
Would you get that to all of us?
Mm-hmm. I'd be happy to.
Mr. Mayor, with your permission, I would like to have Mr. McComb come up.
Okay.
All right?
Well, actually, Mr. Draymond, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I can answer one of the questions, and that is that the interviews took place because of the council direction. We instructed staff to get this input, not to advise us as to whether to do an Arts Council. We've already voted on that, on the creation of an Arts Council, whether to go forward that, but rather on the work program, the dynamics of the work program that we had already voted on.
Right.
So that was, that was the reason for that.
Okay, well, I just assume that those were the questions that maybe they had some input on that would be interesting for us to see. In any case...
Mr. McComb.
Second time today.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Thanks. I was just wondering if you can let, tell us how you would expect your group to either work with or not work with this council and where you think there would be major differences or overlaps, if you had any thoughts about that.
Certainly, I mean, I think in the current environment that arts organizations find themselves operating in now, across the country, there's more of a trend now of arts organizations working in tandem with each other, trying to go their own way. And a lot of that is because of limited funding. If you look at the types of projects that we're currently involved in as Glendale Arts, most of them are partnership-based. Certainly, our involvement with the Glendale Renaissance Orchestra that I spoke about earlier today, our activities with the Glendale Education Foundation, Glendale Latino Association, we're getting involved in a new project with the Character and Ethics Committee. None of those could have come together without the partnerships. I think the biggest challenges that exist among probably the three primary arts organizations, Glendale Arts, Glendale Arts and Culture Commission, and the proposed Glendale Arts Council, is at one level the similarity of the names. When the interviews were taking place, we got a lot of phone calls from people saying, why is the city asking us to come in to talk about Glendale Arts? And of course, that wasn't the case. So if you move forward in forming a council, I might recommend that you call it the Glendale Council for the Arts rather than the Glendale Arts Council, just to eliminate some of that confusion. You know, our stance, obviously, is any advancement of the arts is going to benefit all of us. The more activities that happen in town, there'll be kind of a steamroll effect. It will help bring more people here who will discover other activities that are taking place, which hopefully will bring more people to the Alex Theater, bring more people to other entities such as Center Theater, bring more people to the forthcoming Glendale Renaissance programs, orchestra programs that are happening. I do think for all the organizations to coexist, it's important that as part of the process, there is very distinct definitions as to the role that the Glendale Arts and Culture Commission will play. Certainly, you know, we're kind of a clearinghouse, so to speak, through our Glendale Arts website. Certainly, our primary responsibility is to operate the Alex Theater, but we are starting to do more programs throughout the community, so we certainly would hope that there would be partnership opportunities with this new organization and Glendale Arts to work together on some of those programs, use the resources that we each have to bring to the table to be able to ensure the success of those programs. I don't know if that answers your question, I hope.
Thank you.
Okay, do I have any other comments or questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Move 8C1.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers, Draymond.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Eric Quintero.
Yes.
Okay, now we'll move from art to the art of boxing.
That's right.
The art and culture of boxing.
Precisely. AT is Director of Community Services and Parks regarding a report on the one-year trial period of professional boxing at Glendale Civic Auditorium. Ordinance is for introduction regarding boxing and wrestling. Chapter 5.32 of the Glendale Municipal Code. At D1 is option number one, ordinance for introduction, allowing professional boxing at the Civic Auditorium on a permanent basis. At D2 is option number two, ordinance for introduction, extending the one-year trial period, allowing professional boxing at the Civic Auditorium for one additional year. And at D3 is option number three, ordinance for introduction, reinstating the ban on boxing matches in Glendale.
Mr. Starbird.
Let me go to Mr. Chapchan, our chief ringmaster here on boxing, for the staff report.
Classy.
And something more civil than the arts.
This is "Let's Get Ready to Rumble," Chapchan.
Good evening.
There's a guy named Jimmy Lennon, they always call him the classy Jimmy Lennon. Here we have the classy George Chapchan.
Welterweight or something, I'm not sure what I'd be, but, good evening, Eric Quintero, members of the City Council. On March 17, 2009, you adopted an ordinance which allowed temporary boxing or boxing for a one-year period at the Civic Auditorium. As you know, that had been prohibited since 1947 with an ordinance here in the City of Glendale. So after 62 years, we finally had two boxing matches at the Civic Auditorium. Ross Ferris, who I'll call up in a few minutes, worked with the art of boxing promoter, Garin, had two events, the latest one being January 8, where ESPN actually televised that. Both events for us were successful. I think they were successful for the promoter as well. I think the second one proved more successful for the promoter because of the televised event. I'd like to call up Ross Ferris, who manages the Civic Auditorium, give you the details of the event, and ask that you, our recommendation would be to extend this ordinance to allow us to do boxing on a full-time basis, permanent basis, at the Civic Auditorium. What I'd also like to do is at some point address, there's another form of martial arts, which is mixed martial arts, which isn't addressed in this, which we may want to come back, maybe next week, and add this to it. It's not prohibited at this point. We'd like to focus only on boxing and not allow mixed martial arts at this time, but we do have someone who's knowledgeable about that, if questions do come up about, who can answer any questions you have about mixed martial arts. Ross?
Good evening, Eric Quintero, council members, Mr. Starbird, city staff. My name is Ross Ferris, and I am the Civic Auditorium Community Services Manager. As Mr. Chapchan said, we had two boxing events during the last year. The trial period, of course, began on April 16, 2009, and it ends April 15, Boxing Day, Before the first bout took place and after the one-year trial period was established, the members of the Community Services and Parks Department, our legal department, Glendale Police Department, and Glendale Fire Department had several meetings to establish the policies and procedures by which we would administer and control these events. As we established them, we went ahead and made sure that everyone was totally on board with what we were doing. And we started with making sure that we had the proper security. We had the police department advise us that they felt that three police officers, one sergeant, would be sufficient to handle the inside, in-house surveillance and control of the event. We also had 10, excuse me, 10 security guards, private security guards, that worked in conjunction with the police department. They acted as door monitors and ushers. Everyone that entered the civic was screened, went through metal detectors, and we examined the, physically eyeballed the contents of purses and pockets. Once people were inside, they took their seats. The floor plan was approved by the fire department, as far as the width of the aisles, the fact that no one could just stand around, the proper placement of tables, that type of thing. The Civic Auditorium staff monitored the event, of course, took care of the physical facility, restrooms, per se. We also had a designated smoking area outside of the lower auditorium doors, which worked very well. And we made sure that the building physically, both exterior and interior, was available and provided the, not only the power, but everything else that people wanted. The first bout, first event, took place on June 12, 2009. And since this was our first time through it, it was a little more arduous than the second one. However, all of the policies and procedures that we established worked very well. We had no security problems. We had no smoking infractions. The beer and wine sales were controlled. The crowd followed policies and procedures we set up. They sat down. We didn't allow standing during the bouts. And when the fights were over, when the event was over, everyone exited very, in a controlled, organized fashion. We had no graffiti, we had no problems at all. The second bout, second event, on January 8, was basically the same as the first. The big difference, of course, it was televised by ESPN. We had six bouts, three of them were televised. And I will say, it was a pleasure working with the ESPN crew. They were extremely nice, very hospitable. Everything they needed, we were able to provide, and they came in and really did a very, very nice job. And they came in and really did a very, very nice job. The total revenue generated from the two fights was $19,342 for the civic auditorium. The city bore no expense for this, the promoter paid everything. And we think that it was a total success and gave the city very, very positive exposure, gave the civic auditorium the same positive exposure. And we would like to recommend that the council introduce ordinance option one, which amends the Glendale Municipal Code to allow professional boxing at the civic auditorium on a permanent basis.
Are there any questions? No? Okay, I have some speaker cards. Margaret Hammond, followed by Herbert Milano.
Evening, again, Your Honor, the council staff. My name is Margaret Hammond, and I speak again as I spoke before. Nothing is different in my attitude. I don't happen to care for boxing personally, although I had a husband who was a boxer, amateur champion, actually, in Canada. But I didn't like it then, and I don't like it now. But one of the things I'd like to say, and has been answered, was what profit to the city and what cost? Now, the three police, and the sergeant, was paid for by this group. And then how many on the staff of the auditorium were there to oversee or to supervise? And I'd like to see the actual figures of that thing. And who covered their salaries? I still say to myself, how does boxing add to the quality of life for Glendale residents? Does it make us a better group of people that we involve ourselves in physical violence? That's what it comes down to. I mean, I know, my husband had black eyes, and, I mean, as I said to him, if he didn't quit, I wasn't going to marry him, and that was what it came down to, because it was a horrible thing. I just, to me, I can't see beating up on people for no reason. But anyway, that is my opinion, and I will continue to feel that way. So I would definitely not vote for D1 on a permanent basis. I would vote for D3. But having said that, and I'm sure I'll be overruled for having, for speaking up in my own way, that it'll probably, option two would be better than any of it, of the, better than option one. But again, that is my opinion, and I ain't going to change it. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Herbert Milano, followed by Karin Hartunian.
Mayor Quintero, members of the City Council, city staff, my name is Herbert Milano. You know, when this thing, this topic came back, came up last year, there had been some talk with regard to the issue of promoting Glendale, you've been at it for a few years now. And so I asked myself, what is the guiding image that you want to give the city? You're spending, you know, a significant amount of money trying to hire consultants that will create and define an image for the city. Let me see what I know about the city of Glendale. You subsidized to a tune of $77 million a lifestyle commercial center to bring in upscale shoppers. You're creating an image to say, "We are a special city, we're upscale, come to this city because of this image." Three weeks ago, the city promoted, and we had a fantastic downtown dash, for the purpose of supporting stroke awareness. Those two events, this event and those two, don't coincide. It's not part of the same image. You have a boxing promotion, and then you have a stroke awareness, that to me is a conflicting image. Councilman Friedman, Councilperson Friedman has promoted good environment, healthy living, cycling, that is an image of a healthy city. You know, we have the situation with obesity, and we want to create progress to reduce it and so forth, but boxing, I don't consider it a very healthy promotion, promotional idea. Look, I know the city needs funds, but we're trying to promote today, music, and dance, and drama, and modern art, you know, all of these things that create an image of a city that is, should we say, a little bit more progressive, you know, in its thinking, more encompassing to a healthy living. And now we have the image of a boxing promotion. I don't think it fits. Now, I have personal, you know, concerns, similar to Margaret's, with regard to, you know, the impact of brain injuries and the type of violence that it brings, but I think I have another concern as well. When someone wants to come to Glendale, who would be attracted? Somebody who wants to go to the Americana? Someone who may want to come for a new venue, art venue? But if somebody has not been in Glendale, and they're coming here for a boxing promotion, and they're continually coming to Glendale on a continual basis, I wonder what the overall impact, once they know where Glendale is, if we may not have an impact on crime? It's just my guess, I don't know, but it's just my guess, that you are having a conflicting image, and you may be bringing an element that may not necessarily be good for the city in the long run.
Karin Hartunian.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, city staff. First of all, I would like to congratulate all the recipients of the Glendale Chamber of Commerce Awards last week, especially you, Mr. Mayor, and Mr. McFaul. Secondly, obviously, I'm here to support the passage of the ordinance, option number one. As Mr. Ferris and Mr. Chapchan outlined and summarized, so far, we have had two very successful events at the Glendale Civic Auditorium, which has generated revenue for our city. It has given opportunity for our local athletes to shine on their, on their home base. They have, so far, all of them have been victorious and have had joyous celebrations of their victories. And our events have been very well attended, especially the second one, as was mentioned, and it was televised nationwide on ESPN. And the success of our both events have been well documented by, both locally and nationwide. I am just here to support, as the city supported me a year ago, and Parks and Recreation Department did, I'm here to support the passage of ordinance number one. I'm here to thank all of you for giving me the opportunity to show you how successful these events can be for our city. I'm here to answer any questions any one of you may have, and I'm looking forward to promoting more boxing in Glendale and contributing only positively to the wellness of our city. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. I have a card. Anyone else want to speak? This is a final card. Sharon Wiseman.
Thank you, Mayor Quintero. I'm Sharon Wiseman, from far north Glendale, and I just wanted to say, although I'm not a fan of boxing either, I think one image we can project for Glendale is one of variety, of offering things for a variety of people. And when this topic came up a while back, it coincidentally happened to be a few weeks after I had been to a Pasadena Foothills ACLU meeting, where they discussed gang intervention strategies. And boxing came up as a strategy, an activity, that attracts some young people who might alternatively be attracted to gangs. I don't like to use the term "at risk" because frankly, I think we all know that all of our children at risk, are at risk, for getting involved in dangerous activities. And so I encourage you selecting option one. I think the test proved that it can be a positive activity. And in conjunction with another group I'm involved with, our Glendale Education Social Justice Advocates, another member of the steering committee, Mike Gomez, has actually taken this boxing idea a little bit further, and he's found a group of young people who, some of them are too old for the Glendale Police Activities League, they're over 18. And he's found a place, I believe it's Glendale Fighting Club, where they are training, and they have come across a young woman who is training as a 2012 Olympic boxing hopeful here in Glendale. And I think there's a lot of threads going on that could become very positive for bringing groups of people in Glendale that might not always interact in the most positive way in something positive, in a positive kind of competition. And again, I worry, I remember Muhammad Ali is a boxer, and I think he's a fine mind, and I'm very sorry that he suffers from, I think, trauma-induced Parkinson's that limits his ability to participate in the political discourse now, and I certainly hope any boxing is safe and doesn't endanger anybody's brains. But I think that's a good way to keep young people in school, it might be, that might all, otherwise might go astray, so I encourage option number one, and thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'll go first. I attended both events, along with Mr. Najarian and his spouse, and Ms. Friedman, and her spouse. What I saw at this event were local families. I talked to lots of people there, "Where do you live? Where are you from?" I would say probably 95% of all the people that I talked to there were Glendale residents that had come out to see either kids they knew or just liked boxing, or fans in general. There was no violence whatsoever, there was not even a hint of violence. Quite frankly, people were eating more than they were drinking. All I saw were hot dogs and all the rest of it. So the crowd itself was just a local event, well-attended, and people were very, very happy to be there and in a jovial mood. The promoter, by the way, paid for all of the costs associated with police and fire and everything else, it didn't cost the city a thing. And we are a very diverse city, and not everyone is into the arts and performing arts and so forth. There's people in this city, hundreds of, maybe probably thousands of people, that enjoy boxing, that enjoy athletic events, this is just one in a, in a number of different events that the city puts on. So I mean, it's always a stereotype that somehow there's going to be fights, that people are, no, they go there to watch a boxing event, they don't go there to fight each other. So anyway, I thought it was a very, very positive job by the promoter and by the staff, both the Parks and Rec, and police, and fire, and so forth. I mean, the police literally didn't have much to do, they were just kind of watching the, and enjoying the boxing match. And by the way, this really ties into the Police Activities League, the Police Athletic League, because not only the promoter, but there are so many young people in this city who were part of the PAL, who boxed in Glendale from the time they were little kids, they're now going on to universities, professional careers, and so forth. So the stereotype that because little kids or teenage kids become boxers, that they have to go into the pro ranks, no, that's not the way it works. It's just like the major leagues, for every 15 or 20 kids that get involved, well, even more in baseball, but for a kid that gets involved in this type of Police Athletic League activity, it just, you have to have discipline. You can't screw around, you can't do drugs if you're going to get into the ring and attempt to fight someone else. So I think this is very positive, the way it's happened. For the second bout, by the way, there was a League of Cities get-together, and I was actually with a bunch of elected officials, mayors, and county supervisors and so forth, we were having the meeting in downtown Los Angeles. And when I told them that I had to leave, because we had a boxing match and it would be shown on ESPN, they couldn't believe it. They were actually going to go to the hotel bar and watch the ESPN event. That's how impressed they were. So all in all, I think this is a very positive thing that we've done, and the rules will continue the same. Whoever promotes boxing in Glendale, hopefully it'll be Mr. Hartunian, but he's off to law school, so I don't know how much longer he's going to be involved. But whoever gets involved in promoting boxing is going to follow the same rules and regs. And they are all, all bouts are sanctioned by the State of California Boxing Authority. So there is a ringside physician, there's an ambulance, the boxers are tested, et cetera, et cetera. So anyway, that's my feeling on this particular ordinance. Other comments or questions? Mr. Najarian?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I was, I attended both events, and I was, a year ago, I wasn't very sure as to how they would turn out, but I decided to keep an open mind, work and listen very closely to what the police officer, Oscar Rodriguez, who's our boxing expert on the force, as well as Mr. Ferris and George Chapchan, had to say about managing and putting on a boxing, a series of boxing matches. And on the very first fight, the first event, I took my young son and his friend, and I did see many other fathers with their sons, and it was a, you know, I could say it was sort of a bonding thing, you know, we threw a few, threw a few jabs on the way to the parking lot at each other, but all in good, you know, all in good fatherly fun. None of mine landed, though. The police were on top of everything. The crowd was very orderly, it was very much a local crowd. The second fight, I had forgotten all about, and it was after, sometime after the New Year, and I'm sitting home, I was, I think I was, you know, I was through that football season, and you're vegged out, and I'm flipping through, and I, I see the boxing ring, and they're talking about Glendale Civic Auditorium, and I'm like, Glendale, is that our, and then the light went on, oh my God, that's, you know, this is Glendale, you couldn't recognize it, it was very well, very well staged. So I grabbed my wife this time, and said, "Come on, I'm going to take you out, honey." And she's like, "Oh, great," she's expecting dinner.
She was actually very well dressed, I noticed that.
I surprised her with a trip to the boxing matches. The police were very, very strict in terms of the alcohol service, to the extent that they, they almost, you know, arrested her because she bought two beers and was handing me one beer, and because, you know, the, each recipient has to have the ID check, so we cleared up that little misunderstanding. But they were, they were very, very orderly. The second fight was, I think, much more well-attended. There was a universal or international flavor to it, there were Russian boxers, boxers from the Caribbean, and it was, it was fun, each group of supporters cheering for their own boxer, oftentimes singing little chants in their native languages. Very well done, no major injuries. I thought it was a very, very plus, a good plus for Glendale. It's unfair, no, you really can't say, Mr. Milano, throw out the stereotype about rowdy boxing fans. I mean, to be honest with you, I've seen rowdier crowds at youth soccer games. And it's, you know, I think it is all based on the atmosphere that's created, and I have full, and I can speak for Mr. Hartunian, that I have full faith in his ability to put on a promoter fight. The question is, is everything that he has done codified and set forth in our policies that someone else who wants to come in be required to follow the very strict policy, procedure, staffing, organizational issues that this, that this young man put forward? He is going to law school, so we're, we'll, he'll be out of commission at least for a few years, but I'm sure there'll be others that would like to come in and fill the need. I'm, you know, I'm confident with boxing itself as a sport, I'm not very familiar with some of the other... I'm not very familiar with some of the other, some of the other, let's call it, activities such as the martial arts or kickboxing or wrestling or professional wrestling. I would like to hear a little bit from the police. I know we have our expert officer on mixed martial arts here. I'm confident with boxing. I would be, but still wanting to keep somewhat of a rein on it. I'd be happy to extend it for one more year, just to make sure that the two matches that Mr. Hartunian put forth were not just lucky, lucky shots and that all the future bouts are held to those standards and that they are properly and adequately managed. I'm a little hesitant on the other type of fighting, the martial arts or mixed martial arts. So is there someone that can comment on that? I know that's...
There is, there is an officer here and our recommendation would be not to allow mixed martial arts at this point.
Stick to the boxing.
It takes a little bit more time with the boxing and let's see how that goes.
I'm fine with that. I mean, I'm fine with that recommendation.
And maybe we can bring back...
Limiting it to boxing. Should someone want a martial arts, is there a method by which they could petition the council or to make a proposal?
I suppose they can do the same thing that Mr. Hartunian did and come to council and ask, but we've been saying no at this point, martial arts.
Yeah, I'm not interested in anything other than the boxing matches sanctioned by the State of California. Are there other...
Mr. Mayor, members of council, if it's the desire of the council to, at this point in time, limit the activity program to professional boxing only, we will include the appropriate language in the ordinance as it comes back to you to make it very clear that whether it's mixed martial arts, cage fighting or martial arts is prohibited at this time. And again, as, as Mr. Chapchan noted, should someone desire that, they can certainly make that request to the city council, we would have to look at amending the ordinance, just as we did with, in response to Mr. Hartunian, to permit that.
But if you limit it to professional boxing, does that take out the ability if they were going to have, let's say, a youth, you know, a youth match in the beginning or some kind of an amateur out that they might want to mix in?
We have an exception for those types of matches that are covered by schools, that are handled by or associated with an educational institution and that exception is in the ordinance now. So if it's sponsored by a school, it's accepted. I can have certainly Mr. Grant come up and give you an idea. He assisted in the drafting of the ordinance with Parks Department about whether or not something like that would be included as part of, like a sparring match or something like that.
So the recommendation for, let's say, for D1, that is, that does that, right? That's only professional boxing? That doesn't allow any of the other fights?
It has to be regulated by the State Athletic Commission under the Business and Professions Code to be allowed.
Under, under D1?
Under D1.
Okay. Okay, well, that's, that's fine with me.
Mr. Drayman and Mr. Welch.
Mr. Weaver.
Well, as you know, the last time I said I'm philosophically opposed to boxing in Glendale, 62 of my almost 71 years in Glendale, there was no boxing. I've said it's pretty hard for me to swallow now allowing boxing on a permanent basis. I have problems with the word permanent. It's one thing to have boxing, but to say it's permanent, that means it. And I'm very happy to hear that the two matches went as good as they did. But two matches in one year aren't enough for me. Considering before I said I don't want any boxing in Glendale philosophically, I'm willing to extend a year to see if the boxing masters that come in the next year follow suit. There's different people putting it on. We don't know what the, what it'll be like. And there's a tendency over time to slack off on all the criteria we established. Like here, we had everything down to a gnat's eye, police, fire, everybody was on it so tightly. There couldn't be any mistakes and there weren't. But what happens in three, four, or five years down? Do we get lax and things start to happen? I pray not. But two in a year isn't enough for me. I'm willing to compromise on my belief that we should have no boxing and say, okay, let's try another year and see what happens. I'll reserve my position to say, to allow it to go on indefinitely, not permanent, but go indefinitely, I'll reserve that for another year if option two is adopted.
You willing to spar with me, Mr. Weaver?
No, I won't. You were in the, what, the Marines?
Mr. Drayman.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, I was going to suggest that we have a, reserve the mixed martial arts and the cage fighting for the council.
I was thinking about that.
Mr. City Attorney, this language, on a permanent basis, don't we really mean ongoing?
Yes.
We're not saying that if we support option D1, that means it's permanent.
It's just like any other...
Nothing's permanent, Mr. City Attorney?
Well, if it's embedded in our charter, it's close to it. But if it's embedded in an ordinance, this council has the ability to...
We can't place something in the charter, as you well know. So in any case, just, just so the public doesn't get the wrong idea. Well, Mr. Mayor, you know I'm on, on the record. I was, so some of you can blame me among others on this stias. I was the mayor that placed this on the agenda in the first place when Mr. Hartunian came to me about it. And I, I have seen nothing or from the, everything I've read in the reports. I've heard nothing from the, our public safety personnel that were present, that I spoke to in detail. I've heard nothing from our parks and our managers, facility, Mr. Chapchan and so on. That leads me to believe that anything untoward happened or will happen with this kind, with these kinds of constraints placed on this. I am, I am leaning towards supporting D1, but if my colleagues are mine that they're not entirely convinced and then I will, I will support a one-year extension. Although I'm not sure what that accomplishes because in an ongoing basis, this council still has the opportunity to change our ordinances. Again, this is not something that's being embedded in our charter. I understand, I also want to come to Mr. Milano's comments. I, I understand very well what you're saying and I get your point, Mr. Milano, but I think you also, there's a phrase, you know, know your audience and, and the audience for this is a local audience, almost, almost entirely. So it's not what this projects to the outside world. I think it's, this is, this is, this is the council, the elected officials in the city reacting to requests from our residents, from our constituents citywide that, that, you know, quite frankly, it isn't 63 years ago. It's Glendale and it's 2010 and we are a diverse city and we're a city capable of walking and chewing gum. And we can involve ourselves and our city in the arts and we can involve ourselves in a variety of athletic competitions. And, and it is also kind of ironic that, that we would continue a ban or ban an athletic competition that not only the, the residents or city, but, but the participants in the sport are having to leave the city to go and never be able to, to perform their, their athletic sport in front of their own home fans. It's just, it's just strange to me. So anyway, I do support this. I continue to support this. And I, my, as I say, Mr. Mayor, I would prefer to, to support D1, but if it requires the consensus to make this move forward and, and my colleagues have great concern, I would support D2 as an option.
Ms. Friedman.
I have a question and I'm not sure who to ask, but we keep talking about these other promoters. So do we think that it's the case that we're going to pass this ordinance and all of a sudden we're going to get 50 applications and we're going to have boxing every weekend? Because I, I don't see a whole lot of boxing matches, not that I'm in those circles, but I don't, I don't see them all over, you know, the state. What are we actually afraid of here?
Yeah, I don't, I think we had maybe one other promoter that was interested, but unless Ross, you can tell me others, but we don't, we don't have 50 promoters coming, knocking on our doors. It was just one other promoter at this point.
Thank you. Yeah, it seems to me that to do option two, you know, to come back here in a year, even if there's no problems, just seems to me a little bit, you know, kind of a waste of time since we can always come back here if there's an issue. We can always say this is a problem and, and let's address it. So I personally would, would much rather just do option one and, and keep an eye. And I'm sure that the staff will keep an eye on this and if there's a problem, they'll bring it back to us. We don't, maybe not even in a year. If it's a problem in six months, we'll see it again in six months. But the one year seems a little arbitrary. But I definitely agree with what Mr. Drayman said and also Ms. Weissman. You know, I was there at this match and it really was about, I don't know how many people, maybe 1,500, 1,000 people? About 1,800 people. I'd say 1,000, 1,500 then were Glendale residents, you know. They were our residents, having a good time. Everyone behaved themselves. Why should we not let them have this? It doesn't make sense to me. So even though it's probably not something I'm going to be at a lot, I think my husband might be there. He had a good time and he brought his French friends from Los Angeles and they really enjoyed it. So I think we will get some people and I think some of those people might be in demographics that you don't really expect. So I'm, I'd be very willing to make the motion for, to move item D1.
Okay, are there any other comments or questions?
But I'll, I'll second it.
It's an introduction.
Oh, it's introduction.
Okay, so Ms. Friedman's introduced the ordinance.
And for clarification purposes from, at least what I think I heard from the majority of the council is that at this time, we're just looking at professional boxing only.
Right, right.
If that's the case, the ordinance that you will see next week will have some language that is clear that at, right now, for at least the time being, mixed martial arts, kickboxing, cage fighting and the like will be prohibited.
So Councilmember Friedman's introduced option one.
Keep that on the dais, cage fighting, kickboxing.
Yeah, I'm not interested in anything that involves masks, fire, cages or octagons.
Very good.
All right, thank you very much. What's next, please?
Mr. Mayor and council, we now return to oral communication. Discussion is limited. Time is not part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to a speaker, but there'll be no debate or decision. And the city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for an investigation or report.
Okay, we have oral communications. Robert Mocessian followed by Herbert Milano.
Good evening, council members and city manager, Starbert. I think he's a very nice man. Ms. Friedman, yeah, I've been here eight years ago. I always remember you. You're a very nice man and I like you very much. Ms. Friedman, I think you are a very, very bright lady. You remind me of an angel that I was in love with in Vienna, 1967.
That was you. But was that 58, Milano?
Thank you, I guess. I'm not sure where you're going with this, but...
Yeah, I got it here. Well, I have lots of good things to tell about you. I think you, you are a very brilliant person and you understand politics and you have a bright future. I can see that in you and I think you're very educated. I'm not a future teller, but I can see the capability in you and I hope I'll see you in Washington. I have, I'm sure about it. I, I see that in the way you talk, the way you behave. You have the capability of one day achieving that position in Washington. I'm sure you're going to be a very good politician in Congress or whatever, Senate or whatever you like. I see that potential in you. But there are two things I don't agree with you. First is the billboards on Galleria and the second one is smoking or non-smoking show we had seen like four weeks ago that I don't agree at all. I think it's biased, racist and unfair. But first I will start with, with Galleria. I think it's a very old and ugly, not old, I'm sorry, I shouldn't say that, ugly, very ugly building. And to put some billboards on that, it's my, my grandfather told to my father that to put lipstick on a pig, it's still a pig. And I think it's time, well, if we put billboards on that, I'm sure one day Calvin Klein will come and put billboards with innocent young kids or girls or whatever you want to call it. And I hope I don't see that day or we'll see men like the 41 promoting some jeans or, you know what I mean by 41, so. And about smoking cigarettes. I think, yeah, that building has to be brought down and build a new one. It will create lots of jobs and it will match Americana at least. Put Galleria next to Americana, it looks like it's very, very ugly. My suggestion, my suggestion would be that we should tear that down and build a new one and it would provide jobs. About smoking, smoking outside and drinking coffee, I'm not saying whatever Europeans do, we have to copy, but in Vienna, in Vienna, they can sit outside and smoke cigarettes. They have chains like Aida, which is equal to our Starbucks. And inside they have smoking and non-smoking. And they are much, my time is up.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. Herbert Milano followed by Mike Mohill.
I have a PowerPoint presentation. If I, yes, while this thing is warming up, maybe I can address a couple of things. As I hear several things being presented today, I get reminded of the fact that for many years, many of Glendale residents had to leave Glendale in order to find an appropriate aquatic facility. So, you know, it's, we try to promote health and good living and, you know, great diet and so forth and sometimes the decisions that come in council buffle me. But what I'm concerned about, thank you very much, is a clarification on the trends as you start taking up the city's budget. During the budget study session, you know, we generally have about three minutes to speak, but I think that the public needs to know a little bit more concerning the trends that we have had in the past few years. I don't know, if I could get your cooperation, thank you. I don't have a remote here. It is my contention that the benefits that we pay the various different employees that are represented by a bargaining organization, such as the GMA, the Glendale Firefighters Association, and the Glendale Police Department, are going to present, if they're not presenting already, some very significant challenges. Part of the challenge that we have is that the city guarantees a return on the Calpers' investments. In other words, we are guaranteeing the performance and investments of a completely different entity, an entity that has had not a stellar record, especially recently, with some very significant problems with regard to fraud and abuse and insider activities that are taking place. And we are basically guaranteeing a 7.75% return on those, and if the investments don't come up with that, then the taxpayer of City of Glendale does. Can you see the next slide, please? Thank you. Here are the payments that the City of Glendale has made since 1994. I only went back to the data that I was available in the library concerning the city's previous budgets that are available there. I would have gone further, but basically, as you can see, we, from 1994 throughout the year 2000, it hovered between, you know, $5 and $6 million a year. Due to the bubble we had in the stock market, Calpers decided that the cities perhaps could afford not to send any more money to them. So we had zero for the years 2001 and 2002, slightly growth in 2003 and 2004, and look at the incredible increase starting in 2005. And it goes, and that's an exponential increase. I'm going, and notice that it's 18 million, this at the time that had obtained it from a preliminary budget. I think that number is much higher now. And this should be of a very, very significant concern, because if we have a shortfall of $8 million or $9 million, that shortfall is met right there easily, if we could have avoided those particular pension increases. Now, there was another topic concerning the use of averages in terms of representing, you know, what the average recipient of a pension is. Now, there are many people who are still alive, who were working 40 years ago, 50 years ago, whose pension could be very, very small, you know, $10,000 a year, $15,000. There are also many people who come to work for a city that, or an entity that has Calpers, and they may work for one year, two years, or maybe just a few years enough to get vested. But still, their rates are going to be incredibly small, $1,000 a year, $5,000 a year. So to use an average is an incredibly misleading presentation. We're looking at what will happen in the future, what is the impact of giving a pension benefit that was made retroactive to the time that it began working? And then saying, "Now you can apply all of those years, times 3%, right, and then be based on the last yearly pay." And we know very well that there's a lot of spiking taking place on that very last year. And not only that, a lot of individuals from the Glendale Fire Department and the Glendale Police Department, who are retiring on disability, which means that we may very well, not only do they not pay taxes on those contributions that the city made to them, but there's also the issue of particular insurance that has to be paid for health-related reasons. Now, that increase is going to impact significantly the city year after year, and it is unsustainable. There is no reason why this city cannot come back and say, "Look, the information that you had in 2001 was misleading, was incomplete." Many of you were freshmen, or none of you, basically, maybe Quintero was, he was here two weeks when he may have actually voted for this particular change in the pension. But in 2005, the Glendale Management Association worked for an increase. So it's always a amount of money that basically goes to them when they are not working or providing anything to the residents of Glendale. And we are in need of a lot of additional things that we need in infrastructure and services that we can provide to improve the quality of life. Thank you very much.
Mike Mohill, followed by Margaret Hammond.
Mike Mohill, thank you, Mr. Milano, very well put. Ladies and gentlemen, named Mike Mohill, I want to show you an article out of the Daily News. The article states the following: "The poverty rate in Los Angeles County is higher than the nation as a whole. More than 1.47 million people, or 15% of the residents of LA County, are living in poverty, defined as income of $22,000 a year for a family of four. County financial divide headline news study: 'Rich flourishing while poor flounder and middle-class sinking.'" Headline news. You think things are bad here in Glendale? In Ohio, a man bulldozes, he bulldozes his house, valued at $350,000 to avoid foreclosure. Headline news. "Gentlemen, ladies, can we afford government employees? For the past two years, the city council has been made aware of the financial difficulties of this city, county, state, and country. This council has answered our financial problems by slashing city services, raising utility fees, parking fees, rubbish fees, library fees, et cetera. Also, we have passed bonds and approved, for example, every consent item on the weekly agenda worth millions of dollars. In 2008, this council approved an unbalanced budget and shortly afterwards gave the city employees over $8 million in pay raises and benefits. A couple of months later, our city manager told the public that we needed to cut city services approximately $10 million, but he never went back to the city employees and said, "Hey, give us back that money." In 2909, another unbalanced budget was approved, but rather than giving the city employees a cost of living increase, council, under pressure from the deepening recession, recession, told the unions, "No pay raises." But when the private sector companies were holding back with salary increases, this council assumed the added cost of employee medical premium increases. However, private sector companies were passing those costs on to their employees on a daily basis. So here we are in 2010, and we have another budget. In the process, this council faces a city population where the average city employee salary, not including a lucrative government pension, is approximately $150,000 annually. On the other hand, the average Glendale citizen's salary is approximately 1/3 of a city employee and has to live on Social Security, less than $15,000 a year. To gain faith with the public, this council should take the following action. One, reduce the number of city employees significantly. Two, employees having income over $100,000 should be cut approximately 20%. Stop overtime pay for city managers. Treat city employees the same way as they are in the private sector. Eliminate totally Calpers, that's California Public Employees Retirement System, with new employees receiving only Social Security, just like the rest of us folks. This two-tier system we talked about this morning in the budget session, that's not enough. Why should a retired city employee, for example, receive 80% to 90% of his last year's salary as a guaranteed pension, while non-government employees, by and large, only have Social Security for the rest of their lives? And the federal government wants to take part of that away from us, too. Whole salaries negotiated in public, please, and not behind closed doors with our city unions. Seven, elected officials need to be independent of our city unions by refusing their money, their endorsements, and their bribes. Hire an outside inspector general to audit the fire department. We organize the department to eliminate overtime, overtime pay. Nine, reduce the cost, that we should outsource ambulance services to the private sector. And 10, hire a controller who would inspect the way each of our city departments are run, and have that person report directly to the public first, and then to this council. Will this council, will the public in 2010, 2011, see a new council which is more responsive to the needs of the people rather than the city employees? Thank you for your time and consideration. And I have some handouts.
Margaret Hammond, followed by David Loke.
Here's some handouts already to get to our city council people. I'm the man who bulldozed his house.
Margaret Hammond.
Hey, Mr. Mohill, you're through.
Evening again, Mr. Mayor, members of the staff of council, and staff, and audience. My name is Margaret Hammond, and as I said, I've been around this town for 50 years. You know, you talk about reaching, about an art program that would reach the whole city, and particularly, young people. The city already promotes and backs a program. With the cooperation of the city, we reach 10,000 students and their parents and grandparents, not only promoting arts, but good citizenship, advocating recycling, education, eradication of graffiti, and trash. How do we do this? This is our poster contest that the Clean and Beautiful Committee, your Clean and Beautiful Committee, in cooperation with Neighborhood Services sponsors. And it's going to be held tomorrow evening at 5:00 at the Civic Auditorium, and it will feature and reward these young artists, encouraging them to be good citizens, and to love their city, have pride in it, and as well as the idea of art. We get some wonderful posters, by the way, through that program. So we do, there is promoting. Now, that's tomorrow afternoon at 5:00 at the Civic Auditorium. Not only do you get the 10,000 students, you get their parents, their grandparents, and their teachers, and a lot of other people that come to that event. So you do have a program, and it's a very good program. And it takes a lot of work. The Neighborhood Services people, who are rather shorthanded these days, for one reason or another, really work hard. And those children have a wonderful time when they come and they're recognized for their artwork and the reason for their artwork. So I think it is a great program. And by the way, the Clean and Beautiful, we raise money. We raise money on our own, outside of the city funds, to promote our programs. Now, the other thing that I want to say is regarding the Americana and the absurdity of taking out $48 million in bonds to purchase the property which we handed over gratis to Caruso. We are paying $3.5 million a year in interest on those bonds. We not only gave him that property, we even gave him our city park and our city streets, and even walk on the grass. Mr. Najarian can, but I couldn't. So I do think that this is not right. And don't forget that the Glendale Galleria, for 35 years, was number one for resale taxes, and is still having quite a good advantage in our city of handing us back money for, in sales taxes. I don't know how the Americana is doing. I've heard various stories. If he could not even sell until last month, 51% of the condominiums, the original people could not move in until the 51% was reached, so that the people who had purchased the condominiums early on couldn't move in. So I don't know whether that's a very good sign or not. I'd also like to know about the trash pickups there and so forth. Is there going to be increases for him, for them, in that relationship to the rest of us having increases on our trash pickups and so forth? So I really feel that this is something that we need to look at, especially since we're still paying $3.5 million per year in interest on property that we gave away, gave away. Thank you.
Hey, listen, Mr. Mosseyan, I'm warning you. If you say another word, I'm going to get the police to escort you. All night long, I've been listening to you make comments and so forth. This is a public meeting, okay? So we don't want to hear that anymore. I gave him the warning, is that sufficient?
It is. In fact, perhaps I ought to follow up and let him know that you've been warned by the mayor to maintain decorum within the council chambers. You're speaking out when other people are speaking, interfering with them. If you continue to do that, the mayor may ask the sergeant-at-arms to escort you out of the chambers. Do you understand that? Thank you, sir.
Thank you. David Loke, followed by Christian Moreno. That's the last card for oral communications.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, council members. My name is David Loke, and I'm a longtime resident of Glendale, and somebody who still cares about the community, and after, a first-time speaker. After weeks of frustration, having to deal with a bee issue, I've come here. The last thing I really wanted to do was come here and bring a complaint, but that's why I'm here tonight. I live on Raymond. I live next door to the last house Bob Yasefian built before he came here to work 10 years ago. So it happened to be the house in front of, happened to be a tree in front of that same house. After my, I have a two-year-old and a five-year-old boy, and after they've been stung a couple of times, my wife aggressively went to see where these bees are coming from, and she noticed next door, 50 feet in the air, in a palm tree, is a big beehive, thousands of bees. She said, "Honey, you know, take care of this for me." So I called up the City of Glendale, contacted the number, and things went well. They sent out a bee company, bee companies, bee removers of Claremont, California. They sent out a bee guy to take care of this beehive 50 feet in the air in a palm tree. And the guy shows up with a 30-foot extension ladder, a long stick. He wraps something on the end of this stick with tuck tape. These guys are professionals, they give you a name for it. But really, a 30-foot extension ladder with a long stick, put tarps around there, and started beating on the beehive. The bees fall, structure falls. They wrap it all up, they put it in a trash can, and leave. Meanwhile, they leave thousands of bees on the sidewalk and in the street. They didn't bother to sweep it up and left. One of the neighbor's dogs walks down the street, gets stung by one of the bees. I mean, they're, most of them are deceased, but some of them are not quite deceased. Yet we have thousands of bees, we have other neighborhood children in the area. Anyway, they called up the city, spoke to a guy named Dan Hargrove, speaks very professionally, seems to really care, but yet I believe to be either naive or just doesn't have enough time to follow up on this. And I press him, and I press him, and I press him, and finally, I get him and the bee guy out here, because now there's another collection of bees coming back. We discuss his method of taking these bees down, but more importantly, the mess they left behind. You know, why don't we use a lift? Why don't we get up there and take care of it? Why are we taking an issue at 50 feet in the air with a 30-foot extension ladder? The guy says, "About $350 to rent a lift." I suggested to him, maybe that $300, $50 investment might be better than having to come back, get the lift, or even worse. You know, there are people who are allergic to bees, and perhaps even worse than that. So long story short, he tells me that in 21 days, it'll all be gone, problem solved. I want to believe him, I do believe him. He gives me his phone number, his card. So after 21 days, now the bees are growing again. It's cool, they're not aggressive, but yet the collection is growing again. So finally, I called him directly, and I called Dan Hargrove back, and they came out today, this afternoon, with a lift. They go up there, and they take out the lift, and they, now they're working at 50 feet in the air. Now they rent the lift, now they come back, and they're taking out the bees at 50 feet in the air. Okay? It seems like the problem is solved, except for, after discussing with them before, why I'm disturbed with them is because they leave bees all over the sidewalk. So today, after leaving, I called the guy back and said, you know, "It only takes a couple of minutes to sweep up bees off the sidewalk." I couldn't help myself, you know? I don't want to be here, I don't want to do this complaining stuff, but I literally swept these and picked these up off my knees on the sidewalk, directly in front of the tree. My suggestion is, there are other bee companies. Either they're slothful, lazy, don't care, Glendale deserves better than that. That's why I'm here.
Thank you very much. We respond to oral communication. We respond to oral communications at the end, so have a seat.
Good evening, council members. My name is Christian Moreno. I live at 200 East Palmer, and I've been a resident of Glendale for almost my whole life. The main reason why I'm here is because I noticed every time I come out, come outside and open my door, there's somebody speeding down my block. I mean, there's always, I mean, they're like teenage kids just in, in these cars, just burning out, doing, doing donuts in the street, doing freeway speeds up and down my block. And there's children, there's children on this block. And I've, I've talked to several police officers and told them about this, and they said that they would talk to the traffic bureau and let them know, but nothing's been done about it. I haven't seen any police officers patrolling around here and there, now and then, but nothing's being done about it. And the whole reason why I came here is because I want something done. You know, is somebody going to have to get hit before, before something's done? And I'd like to just see, like, a little more law enforcement on the block to take care of the situation. Because it's just, I mean, I'd hate to see somebody get hit right in front of my house. I mean, it's such a simple thing to do, just have more officers out there. So at least just have an officer sit out there just for an hour and see how many tickets they're going to hand out. I mean, it's ridiculous. It's really ridiculous. And I'd just like to see something done. And that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that ends oral communications. Well, one issue, Mr. Moreno, there's more sometimes in law enforcement, meaning you can, Mr. Moreno, sometimes there's more than law enforcement, meaning you can talk to Steve Zern, who gets the traffic engineer to do studies, neighborhood protection plans, there's more than one. So I recommend you talk to this gentleman afterwards, and he'll at least give you an idea of what could possibly be done. And then I'm intrigued by the bee story as much as everyone else is, and...
As am I, Mr. Mayor, so let me look into it and find out.
Okay. So, Mr. Loke, Steve Zern is a person for you to talk to. Okay, are there any, any other comments? Mr. Starburn?
Mr. Mayor, just a question for Mr. Loke. Are you still here? Is, is that, is that the sum substance of the bees that were left behind, or was that just a sample?
Palm tree.
No, I understand that, but you said you picked these up off the sidewalk, left behind today after they brought out the lift.
Today, right.
Was that about the total of the bees that were left behind?
That was the bees in the immediate area of the sidewalk, let's say 15 feet by the window of the sidewalk.
You swept them all up, and they're in that little bag?
Yep. Kind of put them in a bag.
All right, thank you.
Some are still alive, but we've got them in there.
All right, thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Najarian, then Ms. Friedman?
Let me just say, Mr. Milano came and, and did drop off his, his document before the meeting, and my problem with the way he presents his evidence, I mean, I see several flaws in it. Number one, my question is, are these figures, and, and his chart, if you weren't paying attention, is basically showing a continual increase except for about a five-year span in what the city pays for pensions to PERS. Question number one is, are these figures adjusted for inflation? Figure number two is, are these figures adjusted for the total number of city employees? And question number three is, what percent are these contributions to pension of our total budget? So these are questions I need, and I think to present them fairly to the public, that's the way they should be presented. And I, I don't know if they are, it's just, I mean, it's rather, you know, a graphic that suits his, his purpose and his arguments, but I'm having a problem with his continual portrayal of these figures in the way that best suits his argument. That's all I have to say.
Ms. Friedman?
Just wanted to thank the young man from Raymond, not Raymond, sorry, from Palmer, coming out to talk about this meeting. It's been a long, long day today, excuse me. I would like to formally ask staff to, to take a look at Palmer, to see if there's anything we can do. Palmer, yeah, Palmer. In terms of traffic calming or police enforcement, you know, we have these hotspots all over the city. And one of the problems with the enforcement is that they'll come in and they'll enforce, and everyone will slow down, and then they'll go away, and everyone will speed up again. They kind of move around, it's like whack-a-mole from, from area to area. So it's a problem, and it's something that's not just on your block, believe me. It's, it unfortunately is all over the city, and something that we've been trying to, you know, really take a look at. But it hasn't fallen on deaf ears, and we'll add Palmer to the list of streets where we've heard complaints. That's all I have to say right now.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Drayman.
Another thing I wanted to, there are two, two items related to Mr. Milano's presentation he has left, but he mentions being baffled at the reasoning of the council, and perhaps this council member related to boxing and, and swimming, they are so different issues as to be, well, I'm baffled at him being baffled. It's, on the one hand, we have a citywide ban, which causes, causes people who participate, our own residents who participate in sport, plus those who wish to wish it, to view it, to leave and go elsewhere. On the other hand, he equates that to not having a swim stadium in the city. First of all, swimming competition goes on in this city. Hello, we have high schools, and we have swimming competition, and it is not a sport that is banned in the city of Glendale. Do we have a swimming stadium? No, we don't. Had we the funds to build one, and we had the motivation to do so, it would not be a banned activity. So I'm baffled by him being baffled on that. Also, he made, made several references to averages being used to talk about benefits and pensions and so on. Averages were used by staff earlier today simply because a previous speaker that raised the issue was talking about averages. So the response was about averages. So that's why. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, the motion. Move to adjourn. Is there a second? We are adjourned.